I'm not hearing anything.
Okay, so that, that, the mute button was on the speakerphone. We may want to start back. So, hold on a second. I'm going to, um, I don't think this, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna go backwards.
Can you hear, can she?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now I can hear you. I was testing my speaker because I thought it was my problem. It wasn't. It was on your end.
It was, uh, no, she couldn't because it was muted here and I just realized that no one could. Did you hear anything from the very beginning?
No, I did not. Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Alright, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna repeat this. Uh, sorry, everyone. Um, I'm gonna, as I started, as I stated, uh, I was gonna start with a, uh, a statement that I'm gonna, the prepared statement that I'm gonna read out loud here, uh, and it's, "Over the past week, the village has received a large number of comments about a pending zoning application for a proposed Range USA firearms store and shooting range. The Range USA application is not being considered by the village board during tonight's meeting. However, in light of the many comments received from the residents on this matter, I will provide a brief update. Range USA applied to the village for zoning approval to locate its proposed facility on an outlot in the Menards subdivision on the north side of Lake Cook Road. On August 2nd, the plan commission began a public hearing, uh, regarding the application. The public hearing will be continued on September 6th at 7:00 PM at the Eila Township Community Center, at which time the plan commissioner will hear additional testimony and comments from the applicant and the public. A copy of the Range USA application and related materials are posted on the village website. Those who are interested in commenting on the application are invited to attend, uh, the continued public hearing on September 6th or submit written comments in advance. All public comments received by the plan commission will be made an official part of the hearing record. Because the Range USA application is currently pending before the plan commission, the village board will not be entertaining comments related to it tonight. After the public hearing process is concluded, the plan commission will make a recommendation to the village board, and after the village board receives the plan commission's recommendation and public hearing record, we will review them and make a final decision on the Range USA application at a future board meeting. There will be additional opportunities for members of the public to address comments to the village board at that time. The agenda for each village board meeting is posted on the village website at least two days in advance. Again, the village board will not be considering or hearing comments regarding the Range USA application or taking any action related to it at tonight's meeting. And so, I will reopen it up for, uh, public comment, reminding everyone that, uh, to keep it at three minutes and we have ten minutes maximum. Was there any public comment since, since, uh, we were somehow muted? Alright, if, if not, um, I will then, um, I don't think there's any homeowners associations here. I would just ask again, any homeowners associations present tonight? Alright, I will re-enter the, Sergeant Keith Kaiser, if you could say a few words. Welcome. You're our new liaison.
Yes, uh, excited to be here. Um, I truly enjoy local government. Um, if I might use anything for again, contact information. Uh, the, there was an update that I can think of is the pamphlets that were circulated through town in the last couple of weeks. I will say that that's not just, um, uh, to Long Grove. Uh, we have seen that throughout the county, so it's not specific to, to residents in this area. We've had it, it's armed with, um, each part that I can think of where it was, uh, we're, we're finding those. If there's any, um, new update on where that case is, that the techs are still looking into it.
Thank you for the follow-up on that. Yep. Anything else? Thank you. Welcome, by the way. Welcome.
Who's sitting next to him?
Uh, Deputy Peterson. Um, he's not officially kind of Long Grove. He works here on, um, Deputy Marcois days off, so, um, right.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks. You're in rare form.
So, tonight, the next item on the agenda is, um, the consent agenda, uh,
Alright, back to work.
Back, sorry, gotta get back to work. Um, and upon request, any consent agenda item may be separately considered. There was the approval of the June 22nd treasurer's report, consideration approval of July 22nd, uh, 2022, uh, bill list pay warrants. Um, there was consideration approval of the executive session meeting minutes from the June 28th meeting, and then, uh, finally, consideration approval of the board meeting minutes, uh, from the June 28th meeting as well. Uh, does anyone have any, wanna, have anything removed? Or does anyone wanna make a motion to approve? Okay, so I heard moved by Trustee O'Reilly and seconded by Trustee Tanucci. Roll call, please.
O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is the village planner's report, which we don't have a report tonight. So, the next, we'll skip that and we'll move right to the village engineer's report.
Alright, so you got the engineers' report in the package, so I'll give an updating on a couple things, um, that are going to be happening next week. First is the simple parking lot access widening. That work is going to start next Monday, and so the parking lot can be, access can be opened, uh, by the weekend. We were gonna do it this week, but with what yesterday's rain, um, the weren't, the contractors weren't confident, I should say, that they would be able to get work done and get the access open by this weekend, so we pushed it on a week. Uh, number five, the preventative pavement maintenance. This is the Reclamite application that was approved by the board at the last meeting. Corrective asphalt materials is scheduled to apply the Reclamite in Long Grove next week on Tuesday and Wednesday. So, notices a little, uh, to be handled by corrective asphalt materials of the upcoming work. They'll spray the, um, chemical on the roads, and they'll put a sand blotter on top of the chemical while it dries, and a couple days later, they'll, uh, be back to sweep that up, clean it up. So, um, work is Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh, it, uh, makes sure that corrective asphalt materials, even that, uh, local schools start next Thursday. So, if any work does need to happen Thursday, Friday, that work needs to be delayed till 9:00, 9:30 to, uh, not interrupting with, uh, bussing rounds.
I, I, I have a question. Um, it seems to me, two weeks ago, we had an extensive discussion about this on three roads. Now it's that.
Uh, it was always these ones, the, the 2018 roads, um, that were moved together, uh, Indian Creek, Shafer, Road, John, and Arlington High 12. We talked about the roads resurfaced in 2018 for those roads. Then 2019 was Robert Parker Coffin Road, and then 2020 was, uh, East Castle Road.
I thought the way that was worded was, and the other road was included in the payment.
Yeah, it was, it was various roads. Robert Park Coffin Road and Cuba Road, and the various roads were, uh, Indian Creek Road, Shafer, Road, uh, Court, Dawn Court.
Okay, I, I don't think our Congress clarified that, because now that I look at this and I'm thinking, maybe we should have opted for North Kruger instead of these other four.
Kruger is the freshest one of all of them.
But that was more, I, I can't argue with the statistics, but, but the conversation was, should we do North Kruger or should we not? And we chose not to, and, and I chose not to because those three roads made sense. And now to see that there are four others. And, and so, I missed the wording, and it certainly was not part of the conversation two weeks ago that there were a total of seven.
Yes, but I think,
I think you said that we didn't have to do Kruger yet.
Correct.
The timer though wasn't there yet. We still had a bigger timer to do Kruger in the future.
Yeah, there's a,
I thought it was more discretionary than that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a timing component. So, after a road's resurf- surface, you've got two to three years to put the Reclamite on. Uh, otherwise, for lack of a better term, doesn't, uh, do what it intended to do. So, I remember a couple weeks ago.
Okay, I, I missed, I mistook the, the, the conversation.
Anyway, long story.
Wouldn't be the first time and won't be the last.
Yeah, North Kruger, we can certainly do that next year or the following year. It's the window of applying the Reclamite.
I mean, does anyone suggest we wanna do anything different or just leave it as is? Bobby?
No, I don't, I, at this point, no. It's not old news now. I, I just was very surprised by it.
Can I just ask one question? Speaking of news, we do have this out there, right? That's being done? We're telling people?
Uh, corrective asphalt materials will have the notices. Uh, I just got this scheduled earlier today and ran it by direct. Um, so we'll make sure that we get that out for the,
Get it on a constant contact.
Those types of things.
Constant contact.
So, homeowners will know, and HOAs will know?
Yep.
And, and we should also communicate it though, right? We will?
Yep.
Okay, more broadly, okay.
Yeah, we'll do constant contact. We'll hit the, we'll hit the HOAs, um, and we'll do it on social media.
Okay, thank you.
So, last thing worth mentioning, um, number seven, uh, after everybody's been patient for quite a while at the county, they got the light pole installed at the southwest corner right in front of the landmark exterior. So, um, I think that is the last thing that was on their, uh, 2018 construction project. So, uh, I think the counties can close that out now. So, with that, uh, number of other things going on, if there's any questions.
Did you skip number two or did I just not listen to you?
I was gonna ask about that also.
Okay, sorry. Okay, number two, the northwesterly corner. Uh, we put the request in IDOT to expand that landing area, and then the initial request was to put some brick pavers behind there. Um, IDOT came back to us, um, and said, they do not allow brick pavers at that location within the runway. So, we're looking to see what they may allow over there. Um, they were, we asked them, you know, if they're any concerned about putting the landing, you know, which would be slightly above the existing sidewalk that's over there. And, um, their response was kinda giving me the idea that they didn't pick up on that. So, um, conversations are still, uh, ongoing with them, just to make sure that they fully understand what's being proposed and, uh, they can act and give guidance appropriately.
Two questions that we have in section 10. As you come from the north, turning onto Coffin Road, there is a super hole. It's in, just right in the right place as you're turning and you bang.
Uh, the, the,
It's not, yeah, yeah.
It's in the concrete though, right? Yeah, okay.
I'm, I've never gotten out to see. I just, I just know I did it every day.
Yeah, it is.
The fact that Kent knows what it is makes it, yes, it's,
Well, that makes it real stuff.
Right, no, it, Bobby, I'll, uh, I'll follow up with the county on that.
And, and then the second question, and because I'm at that intersection so often, I am surprised there's not a no right turn.
Um, coming from the north to the same road.
From Coffin, turning right onto 83. It is
Dangerous.
Very dangerous. I have seen so many myths, because you cannot see to the north, what's coming from the north, and sometimes it's coming very fast.
Yeah, I can follow up with, uh, the Bureau of Traffic.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know exactly.
It's blind.
You have to creep out to in order to get, to see anything.
Yeah, but, but it's, it's a blind, it's a blind corner.
Follow up on that, see what the history is.
Does somebody else need to ask for it or?
Nope, nope.
So, if we cut down the buckhorn, we, we, you, it wouldn't be blind, right? Never mind, sorry.
Yeah, Jeff, if you wanted to, you know, the township threw a scoop of like compressible gravel in my truck, and I could have a flat tire right at that bridge expansion area.
Chris is in rare form tonight. Alright, anything else, Jeff?
I have a question for you. What, what construction is underway with the Route 83?
Well, um, it was delayed because they had to move the gas, and then they mobilized all their equipment, and they got their silt fence up. But, um, I agree with you that, um, it seems they're not working eight hours a day, five days a week on that. So, they're still telling me that, uh, it's still a six-week schedule on that without progress out there and getting updated. So,
Put a new pipe in, right?
So, what they're, what they're doing is, uh, putting additional valves on their force maintenance, their San 32 or force main pipe. Uh, the fact that those valves weren't there, um, kind of, uh, exasperated the leak that they had a few years ago. So, they wanna put additional valves in. That way, if something like that happens again, they've got a better way to isolate it and contain it.
Do you need to supply chain?
I'll go with that.
Whatever.
I'm, I'm keeping my eyes on that one since it impacts, uh, traffic in the area.
Whatever it is, it's a stinky situation. It's better than the other word I was gonna use. Um, alright, anything else for Jeff?
I actually have something. Um, and I don't know if this is the right arena, but I,
If I could do a resident who was noticing that in the two retention pads on by the New Horizon, um, that they've been seeing a lot of dead birds and animals, and she's referred that there's some sort of bad stuff coming out of their sewage. I've encouraged her to call, call the Lake County Health Department, but I just thought I would put it on, I don't know, we had test water through our engineers. I don't know if it makes sense to do a test to see if there's anything bad coming out there.
Yeah, there's the annual cycle where we're doing water quality. Let me see if, uh, we've got that on that. You're only required to test 10%, so, and it's in a rotating schedule, so let me see when that was last tested, what we have. But, yeah, no, that's a great, um, advice, you know, contact the health department. Uh, they're out regularly in the area, and I'll just kind of same, similar complaints as insurance septic and things like that, uh, are operating properly.
Um, can I just clarify one word? You used the word sewage, but you,
I mean, it's retention pad, but I just said, um, I don't know if there is something coming out that isn't good.
Okay, got it, yeah.
Are they on sewage?
It should be, right? It should be, yeah. Yeah, with all those rooms there.
One, one would think so, but that's one, a soon.
Yeah, yeah.
New perspectives.
Yeah, they connected to the, yeah, they connected to the sanitary sewer that's in Route 53, but, um, seen before, um, with attention bases and things like that, you know, the surrounding properties are on septic, so, um, that's always a good call to make.
Yeah, we have the same problem in our subdivision, and I just, uh, that was what I told her to do, but I just didn't wanted to put it on our radar so we could follow up with that.
Alright, just looking around, making sure. Okay, I'm gonna move to the next two items, but I'm gonna ask the trustees, um, Trustee Kritzmeyer's not here tonight. There were some changes that we received today. Um, this is for the approval of an ordinance providing amendments, the restatement of the tax increment, uh, revenue bonds that we have for the, uh, Route 83 downtown tax increment financing, financial district in the village of Long Grove, Series 2009A, 2011A, uh, Series 2016A, and then, um, the B bonds as well. So, there's two aligned items there. Um, did, did everyone have a chance to review it? Um, uh, or do we, do you wanna wait until Ann's here at the next meeting?
I, I didn't see changes today.
Yeah, what came in today?
Uh, there, there was some minor changes on the, on the, yeah, do you have it? Do you wanna mention it?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, there were some, the main change that was substantive was the, uh, payment schedule for the Series A bonds. Those are the bonds held by the Open Space Fund. Um, I believe this was discussed at your, um, in the past about making, um, a larger payment in the first year, um, of those, uh, bonds. So, in the restructuring schedule. So, that was the change that was made, so that the first payment, um, on the Series A bonds would be in the amount of $500,000, and then the remaining payments until they are retired would be in equal amounts. The, the final year's slightly different just because that's the final payoff. Um, so, as compared to what was originally in your packet, all of the payments after year one are a little bit lower than what was originally presented, and the year one payments are a bit higher. These are annual payments, the principal and interest, just to pay the amount of the, uh, of the bond. Uh, the other changes were relatively minor. Um, the main thing I would note, and this was on Trustee Kritzmeyer's recommendation, that both ordinances would become effective on September 1st. So, the bond restructure would take effect on September 1st, and that was mostly for a matter of administrative, um, and accounting convenience, just so we'd have the changes in place on first of a month, and going forward, the payments would be due, you know, on a first of a month schedule. Um, other than that, there were a couple of, uh, fill-ins for, um, amounts that were left blank. Those mainly were the arrears charges and interest that have accumulated to date on both the Series A and the Series B bonds. Uh, those amounts are not, uh, directly included in the restructuring, but in the event that there would be sufficient funds in the TIF to pay some of those amounts that accrued up to the time of restructuring, those could be paid at the end of the closeout of the TIF. So, there's a concept of that, um, payback of the arrears charges at the closeout of the TIF was in your original packet materials, but there were some blanks for the amount, so we just inserted the approximate amount on both bonds.
Well, the first two changes, namely the September 1st, issue date, and the $500,000 upfront payment were both covered in Ann's email to the board.
That's correct. Those were, um, she included under her report in the packet, a, a summary, and, and those were highlighted in there, yeah.
So, that 500 is not the 500 that we need to deal with later? Is that?
The 500 would be the, the 2022 payment on the Series A bonds. So, that would be the first payment made back to the Open Space Fund after the restructuring. And then going forward,
And that, and that amount, two weeks ago, when we spoke of this, was that the same amount and probably in the same place?
It was going to the same place, the Open Space Fund. So, when you, um,
Was it 262?
Yeah, when you first reviewed it, it, it was gonna be $262,000 a year on December 1st of each year, 2022 through 2031, to retire the Series A bonds held by the Open Space Fund. Um, the modified schedule has the 2022 payment being $500,000, and then each annual payment thereafter being $236,135. So, about $25,000 lower per year than the original.
Has Ann seen this?
Uh, yes, she has.
And so, she, okay, was doing this.
Yes, she has. She said we could wait or approve it tonight. She's fine either way in her email.
I saw we already have money from the TIF sitting in the general fund.
That's a different issue, right?
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, you're right.
I'm comfortable moving forward. That's a motion I'll second.
Okay. Did you make a motion?
Are we doing one at a time?
Um, can we do them both together?
Um, yeah, if it's a motion to approve both of the ordinances on the agenda, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, moved by Trustee Tanucci, seconded by Trustee Borowski. Roll call.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Um, the next thing we have is discussion and consideration of suspending the community building grant program. So, this is a continuation of the discussion that took at the last board meeting. Uh, anyone wanna make any comments on that or?
This is in response to the moratorium that was suggested by Trustee O'Connor, until we could collectively, uh, look at the processes and protocols associated with the grant and, uh, develop, uh, new processes and protocols if, if the board chooses to move the grant program subsequent to the moratorium.
So, you wanted to discuss the, whatever?
Well, there should be, there's a resolution in there to, uh,
No, the resolution is the previous resolution, not authorizing the grant program. What we're asking is to formalize the moratorium through a vote, because it wasn't on,
Betsy, do you want discussion on it tonight?
That's,
Yeah, no, I, I, I was gonna ask what we were doing. Now, now I know.
So, you, a motion made to approve suspending the community building grant program? I, I can't make that motion, but that's what I'm looking for.
I felt like it was,
It was, it was, it was not on the agenda last time, so we, the board couldn't take action. That's all we're doing now is allowing for that action.
Are we putting a time limit on it?
That's, that's up to the board.
Just pending it until we can, 90 days?
Until we modify the, um, rules and guidelines, or decide that they're okay as they seem to be.
But in no event, no later than, 90 days?
Well, it's not necessary that you put a timeframe on it. It's a totally voluntary program that the village provides. You can,
We have a trustee would like,
It, it is, it is necessary for us.
Oh, oh, I, okay.
Second. Yeah, I, did you make a motion to approve the moratorium?
I was, no, I was just asking.
Okay, then I would.
I was asking about a time certain on it.
Within nine, it's 90 days. Is that workable?
Is there a deadline?
I'm thinking about the, I'm thinking in the back of my mind, the number of issues that, that we're dealing with right now, and must be realistic and, and, and have a sense of priorities on, on what needs to get done rather than what we'd like to get done. I'd like to get this done, but whether we do it in November or January, it doesn't matter.
Well, then, as Betsy suggested, we don't have to put a deadline on it, just to suspend it until we,
But we need a deadline in order so that we're not doing it in March.
So, the follow-up question is, if the deadline comes and goes and we don't do anything, then what?
It's a guideline.
But you, you would extend the deadline if that's the case, right?
Right, but, but let's, let's put January 15th as, as a goal to have this discussed and decided.
So, just timing wise, so it shows up on a board meeting, you, whatever the date is, is 90 days work or is it, uh?
Yeah, it's, uh, the, the only two things I'd say about the 90 days is, first of all, I think Trustee, uh, Trustee O'Reilly's right. We're gonna have people, especially for the holiday season, looking for that, for that grant money, especially with the bridge lighting and things like that coming up. So, if, if the board chooses to make that money available, the sooner for, to allow for that would be the better. The second thing is Trustee Kritzmeyer had conveyed to me, and I think she may have too, Trustee, uh, Tanucci, that she would like to get the community involved in, in deciding. I'm not sure, um, which,
I think she wanted a questionnaire.
Right. Uh, I'm not sure which way we wanna take on that, but, um, if we do 90 days, we're here in August now, so September, October, November, the first, uh, the first meeting in November.
Yeah.
Is a benchmark.
Yeah.
So, do we have to say anything else? Um, does it, we could also then, uh, it could be 60 days, right, if we choose to make those changes, right? We can cancel at any point in time?
Yeah.
Okay. Does somebody wanna make a motion?
Sorry.
You did, okay. So, moved by, uh, uh, Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by Trustee Micho?
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Um, we're gonna move into the village president and trustee reports. I'll start with mine. Um, I just wanna let you know that I put a, uh, letter, I sent a letter out tonight that was received last, uh, yesterday from Red Taylor regarding the, uh, Route 53, uh, task force. Uh, there was a, kind of an awkward discussion that occurred in that meeting, and, um, this is his rebuttal to that. I noticed that it's not, the meeting was, the recording's not up there, which is kinda weird. Did you notice that, Rita? So, but, um, it was, um, it had to do with the fact that they signed on to a letter to protect the open space, uh, and, and keep it a green space, and then it kinda seemed like that's not what was being said in the meeting, where they were talking about keeping, um, you know, open, the possibility of building a road and wanting to keep the IDOT in ownership of it, so that if something, if it was ever needed, it was there. So, they got,
Yeah.
So, they, so they, uh, both on the line and Graves Lake kinda came back in the last Route 53 task force, with recommending that the land stay with IDOT, uh, so that if, if in the future, um, there was need for a road, they would have the ability to do that. the future, there was need for a road, they would have the ability to do that. And it created a really awkward conversation.
Yes, and the task forces come up with alternatives.
Uses for the land, yeah.
And they...
So this is his rebuttal, so read the letter. It's his rebuttal to, I think he got challenged, and, well, you signed this letter, and that's why we have this task force. So he's explaining why he said what he said in the meeting in this letter. It's three pages, so it came in yesterday.
So it's not going to be...
Well, anybody who thought this was going to be somewhat of a fool.
So that's that. The other thing was that we had, Greg had made a recommendation to me, we have not put a new chair in yet for the EDC. And the discussion was, do we temporarily suspend the EDC? No decision's been made, but wanted to have that conversation publicly to see if we wanted to do that for right now. So we have, we have not recommended or appointed a chair since Roger Goble departed. And so I just would like to put...
Is there chairman of materials on the, on the committee now?
In my interaction with, material's probably a good way of saying it, can somebody be developed to step into that chair? I think time commitment wise, there's probably one person that potentially could, not necessarily sure that person would be willing to take on the...
Well, I wouldn't be thinking of time. I would need more leadership.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Rather than time.
And I don't, I don't know the members, other than by faith.
And there's still some members lacking, there's still a gap, and there are some vacancies that are, that are there as well.
I don't suppose we had a big response to the call for volunteer now?
No, but, but quite honestly, I think that our messaging is poor. And I, I have asked that we kind of revise it because I don't think because you're an architect, that you're good at being an architect. And just because you're this or that makes you a good committee member? And so I've, you've seen what I'm trying to put together is more, is your intent and your, not willingness, but your, your desire to serve the village strong enough to get on a committee and make a difference. No, if you're going to, if you're going to get on committee and speak every third meeting, we don't need that. What we, what we do need are people who are participants and can take, if we can identify a project, can take the project and run with it and have a committee run with it.
The engagement part's definitely critical. We see it in every one of our committees, that you've got some people that are actively engaged and others that are passively engaged. So the engagement and the commitment to the process and what's being required of them is certainly important as much as it is the skill set, maybe to a greater extent. The issue with the EDC was, we've got five main retail, or five main commercial areas, if we look at it. South Gate, what I call North Gate, up when we talk about where the B2 district is, certainly the historic downtown district, Sunset Grove and Long Grove Commons. And an approach with strategic approach to it rather than ad hoc haphazard is what we need, especially when we've got two TIF districts that we can certainly make sure no vacancy rates in the Sunset Grove one or reduce that. But, you know, 15 years on the, is the years over with the Menards Outlets and the South Gate. And then we've got the Geimer property there. And because this village is proud enough not to, and successful enough not raising a property tax to support the municipal services, our sales tax is our life source. And we've got to find a way to either not only make sure we sustain it, but see it grow and see it, see it grow to enough that we can continue to support the cost of increasing a better delivery of government goods and services by an increase of revenues coming into the village. The EDC is, the economic development, not the EDC, but the economic development right now is essential. I think we need to put together a more, formulate a more structured plan and strategic approach, almost like a mini CEDS, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, and let that serve as marching orders to the EDC if the EDC should come back. So that way the EDC has a clear mission, and this is their function, and this is what the board says their function needs to be, because it needs to be what the board says. So...
And I, I absolutely agree with what you said just now. And I, I think what you're describing, Bobby, to me is handled in an interview process. You know, certainly, certainly, certain backgrounds and certain skills are more helpful sometimes. Sometimes you have Renaissance people who know a lot of things about a lot of things. You know, that would be great. We have a lot of talent in this village. We know that. And I'm, I'm not sure how to go about reaching folks and explaining to them what it's, what we're looking for and try to find, there are people who care about this town. And I, and I'm not sure that they know how. And some of them admittedly say, yeah, I know how, and I'm not interested.
I gotta get paid for this.
I'm just not, I'm not interested. And I get that, you know, maybe they could be consultants or whatever. But it is a big deal. Going forward, you know, seven, 10, five years from now is huge for us.
I think, I think the outreach to attract the right, the right person is very important. That's what Bobby's working on. But we are, and forgive me if I'm showing your coverage here, but trustee O'Reilly had talked about opportunities for us to set up a table at some fest and get people to know what the village is about and maybe attract some people, just to pique some interest.
Well, you know, something you might forget is that each of us are selling long growth all the time. Or if we're not, we should be. And every resident should be selling long growth. And, and the, you know, when you talk to people realistically about long growth and what we have to offer, you can see a light that shines that is quite special. I just attracted a rock, a rock. They're going to sell rocks of some sort.
Such a little rock.
Oh, rocks, literally rocks.
A rock. And I'm kind of working on taking them from thinking a little place to a bigger place because they love what they see in long growth.
That's definitely...
So that's, that's why I don't want to see the EDC's loss. We have to corral that talent and find someone, if they're not there now, find someone who can lead them.
I think a table at the fest is a...
Oh, of course we should.
It's a, you know, and we're working at a table there, the 53 group.
I know.
At Apple Fest. But while, while not all the residents attend the fest, you know, I think if we, you know, did demographics, probably maybe the majority are from outside of Long Grove, it could, it could invite someone or open someone's eyes, you know, hey, maybe I want to live here.
Yeah, but, but maybe they've got a business.
Exactly.
Friends who have the business.
Precisely, precisely. And it would have to be very clear that's the reason for the booth, you know, or whatever. Anything we can do to reach out.
And I don't think, I don't think we're talking about sacking the, the EDC. I think we're talking about suspending it until we can figure out exactly what direction we want to go. So that way they've got, the one thing the EDC kept complaining about, at least since I was started, was having marching orders and getting a sense of where they needed to go. And Jenny certainly is aware that it was kind of like, so I think the suspension allows us an opportunity to look for people, look for the talent that's either there now or potentially can come in, but allow us to kind of get a sense of, okay, this is what we need you to do, and this is the best way to approach it, and these are practices that are being used by other communities.
So I just want to make sure I hear from the whole board here, because I haven't heard from Chris. Kent, I heard something in Jenny, so I mean, Chris, do you have any thoughts?
I can't should go first.
All right, can't you go first? That's his thought.
Yeah, I understand what Greg just said, and I agree with it. Both what was written in the memo and what was discussed, and I'm not talking about disbanding it completely forevermore, suspending it, redefining the mission, maybe finding additional people or different people, and then regrouping it and sending them in the direction they need to go. I think that makes sense.
Chris?
That does make sense.
I'll just reiterate, because I've been on the EDC, I think it's floundered, and I think there hasn't, there's been a lot of frustration from the EDC members feeling like they tried something that's, they're told that's not what they're laying, it's this lane. So it's just been a lot of frustration, and I think they...
I would like, I don't want it to go away. I think this does have a use. I just think that we need the right people with the right vision. And I think we as a board need to be very clear what we want that mission to be.
Or alternatively, we could kick the can down the road a little bit and not put a commissioner in place, I mean, a chair in place and continue on until we find one.
I think we have to restructure. This seven o'clock in the morning may not be ideal. I'm just guessing. And maybe once a month, it's far more than they need to. And I would look to having them have a conversation on where they want to go. And, and, and our contribution and yours to make, instead of us inflicting what we want on them, it makes more sense to include them in whatever structure we're going to do. That makes sense.
I, I see us giving them clear direction as opposed to...
I think our direction is clear as well. I don't think we've ever given good direction.
Well, that, that has to do with the leadership. You know, I don't know if we've looked at anything, you know, without going into all the details, there were things we did that were successful that we didn't want to do again, you know, and they wanted... It wasn't, it was a leadership issue, I think.
Yes.
Maybe even from the very beginning. But parenthetically, what, if I can just make a quick comment about what I've observed with our committees and our commissions, is that a lot of the people who are on these committees and on these commissions don't think it's important to show up. And with some of them, that is frequent, I've noticed. And, and maybe we should have terms, term limits, so that we don't have people we think they're going to...
We do, yeah.
We do, don't we?
Actually, do we just...
We never enforce it. But it's like, you know, well, they've been there for...
Yeah, that's a whole other discussion, so let's...
Just...
We're going to go down a big rat hole in a second.
No, that's... Where do you go? Comment, you know?
Okay, please, thank you.
All right.
So I mean, I, it, so Greg put a note together saying, should we do this while we restructure? Or we can, I mean, we can look for volunteers and bring somebody in and do it that way too. So whatever we want to do.
Maybe we can target somebody.
Could.
That's, that's really, really perfect.
Why not? You know? And lay it out and say...
You give a target, you give a target, each one of us give a target, and Bill can go and work on them.
I can do that.
Hmm?
I can do that.
But I mean, we can do that without suspending the commissioner, putting a...
Exactly.
So we can, or suspending, whatever the word is that we're supposed to use here. We can, we can do that, right? We don't have to take any action, it's just talked about, what should we do, right?
Yeah, and it makes sense to find a leader, and then the leader choose the, all the people that are going to want to be part of this.
Well, then, but again, that's if we suspend it. And we have people that are on the commission right now, until we get a new chair, they're there. But I mean, we can make the decision to start over and...
And there are people on that commission right now that want, continue, want, still want to continue to work. They reach out to me once a month and ask, okay, are we still going to have a meeting?
That's great.
Yeah, so there's still, there's still a couple of them on there that are still field investing, so...
But I think at the, at the same time that we're working in that lane, I think we have to work in our lane, what do we want them to be doing?
Right, absolutely.
So do I understand, I guess we didn't talk about this, it's just what's in conversation? There's, there's, there's no trustee that's running EDC right now?
No, no, right now it's Jenny.
Okay.
And we're not making any changes tonight. That, yep, no.
Okay.
Yeah, that's staying. But it's just, I mean, maybe we just, like we talked about, we're going to look for a leader, everyone try to come up with somebody to take on the chair spot while we think through how the organization should work, right? How we should work with them.
And if, if the board decides not to suspend the EDC, what I would recommend then is that we convene the EDC to let them know what we're planning on doing, also so that people that are interested will stay, they're not out in the abyss, so to speak, and wonder. And then at that point, you know, let them know, we're going to follow up, and here's our basic intention on how we're going to approach this. We're going to make it stronger, we know the value. That's whatever direction the board wants to give on that, so...
I would disagree with what you just said, that we'll let them know how we're going to do it. No, we need to include them.
No, that's not what I meant. Let them know that we're going to go out and recruit, we're going to turn around and develop a strategy on it. I didn't mean from the standpoint, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No, yeah, just to kind of like, this is what we're going to do, rah rah team.
Good with that, so. Everyone good with this approach that we just talked about?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm a little confused. It seems like we changed directions.
Well, we didn't have, no, we had...
We were continuing forward as previous before.
So Greg put out a memo with some thoughts and ideas, right? So the purpose, it was not, the decision had not been made, I want to be clear in that. It was just, we put it on the, I wanted to talk about it in my report so that we could have a discussion about this. Where, where does EDC go? What's EDC going to be in the future, right? Who's going to lead it? How do we want to handle it? Do we, you know, so one of the options was, yeah, to suspend it, right? Could do that.
That's the option we support.
You support that? Suspending it?
Yeah.
For how long?
We know what we want. Why do we need to suspend it? It is suspended, isn't it?
Yeah, because essentially, essentially, we have not appointed a chair right now, so...
There has not been a meeting since Roger left.
Right, so until we can find somebody, what, who's going to...
We didn't have a court because nobody showed up.
Right.
This is an opportunity to retain people who have a deep interest in the village and wish people well who don't, and then bring in new people with new direction and start over. Doing what we're doing now, we're going to keep getting the same results.
Suspension's being used from the sense of, we're not going to convene regular meetings. It doesn't mean that you can't call the group together to have that discussion, because right now, every month, we have to cancel a meeting. We have to notify everybody, and not that the work is the problem, but the suspension's a tool we can use that we can still turn around and behind the scenes do it. That's why suspension was recommended.
Okay, so if there was a discussion, if we suspended that, we would, everyone that was on that would lose their seat, right? So what I think what I'm hearing is we've, we suspended, but everyone... So what I think what I'm hearing is we've, we suspended, but everyone...
Another word for...
Pepsi.
Pepsi.
Another word for suspending.
We're suspending a lot of things tonight.
Hi, Adam.
I mean, you could just cancel meetings for the next...
What's another word for...
Postpone regular meetings.
Inactivate?
Not it, it, it sounds postponed.
Yeah, inactivate or postpone regular meetings of, for a period of however many months, so temporarily suspended.
It's not bad, we're postponing regular meetings to further notice or something on that word. Suspension just sounds like...
School.
School, yes, yes.
Attention.
Bad kids just stop that.
And as to the question about the existing members, the members all serve for a term of one year per the code, so I'm not sure when each individual person was appointed, but...
You have a list.
Temporary suspension or postponement of meetings wouldn't necessarily cause them to lose their seats once it's recently.
I'm much happier with that wording.
School.
Yeah.
Okay. Chris, you got that look?
No, I think you're splitting hairs at this point.
Yep.
It is, you're right.
My concern is losing the good people. Like, I'm just going, I suspend this thing and I'm sitting here going, well, I don't know what's going to reconvene. I'm going Arizona for three months and don't care. I want somebody who's good and involved to just kind of give up on us. That's just my hesitation.
So without getting names in this meeting, can we identify who those people are and talk to them individually, explain what we're doing and explain what we'd like you to say?
Yeah.
Maybe Greg should tell some, not others.
Yeah, no, I can...
What you just did, actually, you know, if they listen to the report, so...
But I would, there are people there I would love to have a one-on-one conversation with and they share the values of, so...
So we'd like to retain them.
All right, so do I, do we have direction?
Yeah, I'm good.
Everyone good with the splitting hairs direction? All right, this clear as mud is Bobby.
We're postponing regular meetings.
We're postponing regular meetings right now.
I'll work with...
Until further notice.
I'll work with Jenny and talk about a plan of approach.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'm going to move to Trustee O'Reilly to see if she has a report.
Um, no. But the bagel, the bagel place is almost open. They did their watering today.
Excellent.
Where is that again?
Next to Bobby's office.
Where the wheel is?
Yeah.
It's right there.
I love bagels.
Is it down below or up the top?
No, down below, yeah. Yeah, it looks, it kind of looks out on the wheel.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so...
So is it near White Oak Street?
Yeah.
The first one in on the road.
So hopefully he could get an arm that could shoot out and...
Maybe he could...
Put the bagel on the wheel.
There you go.
With those guns at the stadiums where they shoot the T-shirts up and bagel and they're just... Never mind.
Is there any percentage benefit to us having our new business owners come to a meeting and introduce themselves and we introduce us to them to sort of say welcome, congratulations, and that, to give them some sort of recognition, like the lady with the flowers shop up across from smoking tea?
Blue daisy.
Yes, you know, and it's tucked in there and people find good floors, they find where they are, but it would be nice...
We also have that, we also have that other store opening up.
The one that's right next door to me is, they're working on it right now. I just think it'd be nice to bring them in and say...
It's also nice if you could step in and say hi.
I did and she was close. Oh, so, but, well, I mean, it, she hadn't officially opened yet and whatever, so I just haven't gone up there since, but, you know...
You can extend that like we do the H O A's.
Okay, well, let's figure out how to add it to the agenda, so we can invite them.
It'd be nice to give them like a ceremonial certificate or something, you know?
Yep.
Something, something.
Yeah, something like really token, something that they could hang up on their wall and say, hey, look, you know?
Free getup at jail.
Picture of the board?
Anything else?
Picture of the board?
Trustee O'Connor, I have you next.
One building violation.
No, we're not going there. Trustee O'Connor, do you have a...
Quickly, the Route 53 corridor is, oh gosh, it's a tagline, anyway, we...
Oh, that's right.
It's, I don't, people want to say Midwest Sustainability and that's not us, that's busy, but anyway, the green corridor. We're sending out petitions, handing people petitions, just asking for signatures to let them know what Task Force is all about and right now, the consensus on the Task Force is, and they haven't voted on it, but the consensus at this time, except for two matters, is keep it a green corridor, possibly a state park. But the point is to keep it green. There may be some horse trading, whatever, but it's just to sign a petition so that when the Task Force finishes and makes their recommendation, we can deliver boxes of signed petitions to the governor. He, I think he won last time by something, I think the number's nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-one votes and we'd like to collect nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-one signatures. We collected just under a thousand at the Lake County Fair two weekends ago. Lots of people stopped at the booth, it was, I was flabbergasted with the, the people who came in and looked at the pictures and photographs and said, you know, what is this all about? That was, and they had no idea what it was all about. So we especially need people to, if you have friends, enemies, I don't care, you know, as long as, as long as they're environmentally conscious and aware of it and they feel that they could just sign the petition, that'd be fabulous. So if anybody wants to help, let me know, I'll prob, you'll probably see me walking with my clipboard everywhere I go just because we need, we need signatures.
Are you doing Irish Fest or Apple Fest?
Well, you offered us a booth and they, they so concentrated on the county fair just to man the booth, although they finally just said, yeah, that would be a good idea, you know, Long Grove has invited us, let's do that. Because manning the booth is easier.
Yes.
You've got to get volunteers to agree and, and we had some people that held three and four shifts and, I'm telling you, three hour shifts standing up.
Why aren't you sitting down?
Well, because that's...
Well, now, now I answered my question.
When people are sitting down, it's like, they already checked out.
Yes, yes.
You know, you gotta, you gotta be whatever, so, anyway.
Well, just, just so everybody knows, the LGD...
L G D.
That's it. Are very gracious about giving you, you know, space...
Absolutely.
For the, and you didn't think they would.
No, I just don't know if it fits into what, you know, I, I, I hope we're not going to be, you know...
I'll give you, I'll give you somebody to, to talk directly with and, and get a good place.
And we could put the Long Grove booth nearby.
Absolutely.
And people did, if we get a booth, that, you know, trustees, would anybody be interested?
The pay better than this, or?
Yes, quite, it's superior.
It's a ten percent favorite.
Because we might even be near the beer tent.
Right.
Anything else?
What, what, what?
Go ahead.
What would we, what would we distribute?
Um, I, I think that we have plenty to dis, you know, even if it's just a one sheet on committees in Long Grove, you know, did you know, do you know kinds of things about the village, it doesn't have to be anything fancy schmack. Well, somebody has to do it.
It's an opportunity to swallow stuff, it's an opportunity to do, you know, there's, there's, there's things that can be done.
Long Grove, for, yeah. Where did the word Long Grove come from? Actually, we could do a, what'd be fun would be to have a treasure hunt of some sort, you know, or a, when kids have to go out and get...
Scam there, huh?
Yeah, you know, but you could take them to historic buildings and maybe you could put QR codes on them, you know, that'd be kind of fun.
Well, first we have to try it.
And you don't know what works till it works. Actually, at our booth, this is more information than anybody, we, somebody put kids' mind kind of toys in there, you know, like things that you go like this with and you can turn them into cubes, you, I've never seen them before, but we attracted the kids and because the kids came to see what kind of toys we had out, the parents had to follow them, so it worked really well. It was a great technique and we noticed in the booths around us started doing the same thing on the second and third day, bringing toys.
Wow, wow. So, so can, can, can we work on something that we would...
Chief was there, he signed our petition. Chief Igerberg.
Yep, Natalie, Natalie would be a perfect one to do.
And, and a tent.
Oh, yeah, we need a cover, those are not inexpensive.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of, well, some, something, something.
Put those little camper pop-up canopies, is that what you're talking about?
Maybe we can borrow that stream that sparked up there.
I'm just going to turn around in middle of the night, hello Brothersville, we're...
Okay, let's not go there.
Tell Jesse I'm sorry.
Somebody came up to you, anything else?
It disappeared.
Okay, so, all right, we're going to keep this moving. Trustee Michel?
So I did get feedback from Kent, thank you, thank you Bobby, and from Ann. I also talked to Jeanette Berger about the grant proposal. Chris, did you have a chance to look at it? I'd love to hear your feedback on it. So I was going to take a lot of advice and sit down with Greg and Natalie and kind of incorporate that so I could bring something forward for approval, but it would be great to have...
I'll call you tomorrow. You know, to me, I told Greg this morning or this afternoon, to me it's about how much money do we have to do this, you know, I'm looking at my three and a half acres right now and talking to the guys to clear buckthorn and to do the box elders. I've got quotes to figure, but just my pocket here, the entire grant program, which I've did. Right, so, you know, it's good, I think it's good, just really think about the money involved in this, a thousand dollars to take a tree down, you know?
Yeah, there's a couple other programs that I've been putting some more information in my trustee report because there are other communities that are doing it. Meadowland is working with Openland to do a buckthorn removal. So I, I would like us to try.
I agree, from all four.
I wonder if we, you raise a good point, if we had a list of vendors whose prices are super reasonable?
I have a list, I've added to that file, I did it late today. I did put in a handout of different companies, so I don't know if we, you know, I think it, we cannot set up a deal with them, I mean, because we can't recommend them, but maybe if like a subdivision, you know, there's enough people, they could do a project or...
You can not recommend vendors?
We can recommend, like, we can give people a list, but we cannot say use it.
Can't endorse them.
We can require, but we can recommend.
Yeah.
But it, it might be really helpful to people to just have a list of people who do things like that, you know?
I have it, so put together. But actually, Jeanette Berger and I have invented the bill together. We both, and it was reassuring because our, both of our vendors had kind of aligned, so she had done the research, I had done the research, and they're pretty much spot on. I guess one of the things I really would like for people to do with this is maybe, I've been doing restoration work for twenty-seven years and I still hire professionals, just to bring someone in to consult with you, like, this is what you should do, put, you know, just give the, give them the money to put together a plan, like, these are things that you could do, but just kind of inspire them, maybe, I also thought in the invasive, in the grass, maybe having pictures of before and after of buckthorn shot woods and open woods would be nice.
One of the nice things about buckthorns is privacy.
Well, you know, you know, truthfully, you know, it's like, yeah, it's buckthorn, I got a screen here, you know, so maybe, may, maybe it would be helpful to have ideas of plants that can replace that privacy.
There is also, and there's seed sources, because one, part of this is removal of invasive, but you've got to put something in there that's going to take and grow and there's inexpensive options, very expensive options.
Metal in a can.
Green spray paint.
I called Lee Bassett's wife recently and asked if he taught anyone how to make his walking stick and he didn't.
Oh.
He did not teach anyone. Really just a shame, because they're beautiful.
Were they made out of buckthorn?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yes, they were made out of the root of buckthorn.
Is that right?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
So I would, in, in our searching, I would love to find somebody who would love to learn to do that.
I've got roots in my property, supply the entire village with working.
No, we don't need buckthorns, we need people who can do it.
So what's the, what, what is the response to the spray paint that's going into the earth that our water comes out of? Does it get filtered?
Well, this is why you really want to hire someone that knows what they're doing and not just your lawn service crew. And a lot of it is with buckthorn, it's because you actually paint it on to the plant, you don't just broadcast spray it. And that is, it keeps it from contaminating the water, I mean, it's very specific, so I think it's, that's my one fear about this is I really would like to encourage people to talk to professionals, use the products.
That's why one of my recommendations that I sent to you is make sure you're using a licensed supplier of herbicide, not jolly weekend grass going service, someone's licensed to use, licensed to use.
Yeah, so, you know, I do a lot of this and we work with, we read a lot of environmental literature and if it's supplied correctly, it's okay for the environment. The misuse is what's called, when they're spraying it on our crops or they're just broadcasting, that's when you run into trouble. But if you're, you know, painting it correctly onto the stuff, you're going to have the most effective killing of it.
It's a great time of year, huh?
And actually, winter, right, winter is the best time to do buckthorn removal, so I would love to try and get this up and running, so maybe.
So I mentioned this a big last time, can we, would you get your committee to either do a panel interview and, and/or a quick chat on Zoom that's recorded, if they can go to the village website and it's all right there for a homeowner?
I'd like the conservancy. I mean, there is a lot of stuff out there already that we could put links to for people. I, I would like people to hire professionals to come in and train them, but, because, I mean, the grant is giving them the thought to hire someone, I mean, it's not like, if you're going to volunteer to do it yourself, I suppose you could put in a grant proposal for the garland, but I don't think, I don't, can you buy garland if you're not affiliated, if you don't have a justice application?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, so...
But I mean, there are people here who don't know that fragmites are not, they're not pretty.
Right.
They don't, they don't know what buckthorn looks like.
Right. Right, well, that's why I'm saying, find someone that...
I'm thinking on, I'm thinking on that level.
Right, I know, but that's why I'm saying, that's why we have a grant, so you're gonna bring in someone who is a professional that's gonna help show you and come up, help you come up with a plan for how to treat it.
Anything? Go ahead.
If, if we're gonna provide money for somebody else to hire a professional, seems like we should be more indirect, that, that seems convoluted. In other words, why don't we hire them ourselves? And, and, and how do you know, is, is there an approval of who they're gonna use?
I think that'd be pretty wicked.
Exactly, it is.
You know, if, if I say I'm going to do X to my property, kinda like a permit, you know, draw, draw the thing, you know, draw the, what, what it's gonna look like, who's the vendor? And once it's completed, that's, that's when you can bring in the bills and put you on the, on the list, you know, and I guess...
Well, I, I personally don't like the reimbursement process, I, I think it should be the other way around. Um, but, but at least if that's what they use it for. I mean, you know, well...
So, here, here's, here's where it gets interesting, so you have the issue of private homeowner versus HOAs too. So, where you have a formalized HOA, they can easily apply and they're, they're hitting, they could be hitting a large area. Um, but then, not everyone has an HOA, so, you know, you, it, that's that other element that we have here that you have to consider, if you're, you know, if you're in a subdivision that has an HOA, they're dealing with all these things that came up in the HOA, um, you know, president's meeting. So, I don't know, I, I, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, you, you, this was presented as a pilot, so I think you gotta stick in the ground somewhere and get started and see what happens, right? And, you know, you're gonna put X amount of money to it and see if it's successful. I, I, you know, that, that's what I think we have to do.
Regarding the vendors, I know we said we can't mandate that you must use this vendor, but can we come up with a list of vendors and mandate that you must choose from this list?
That's almost like saying, you can't use them.
Yeah, we can't, I don't, I think that could give us some trouble, but the, Betsy's looking at... We'll, we'll ask the attorney here.
So, if you were, if you're gonna initiate a grant program typically, there would be a form of grant agreement that you would use whenever you give a grant. So, rather than specifying a particular vendor or group of vendors, I'd recommend you specify the qualifications for the vendor, or, you know, based on the type of work that's being approved. So, if it's a grant to do this type of work, and you need a certain license to do that type of work, it has to be a person with the appropriate professional license, for example.
And insurance, is that...
That's too often part of a grant agreement, yep.
Classify the liability insurance.
Yep.
But trying to get back to what Bobby said, I'm with you on that, Bobby, I, I don't, I, you know, kinda like paying money to a homeowner to go hire a professional is very convoluted. What if that money, whatever it is, a piece of it, were applied to somebody like a professional engineer who happened to be horticulturist or licensed or whatever, and he, we used him as a consultant? So, if a resident came in and said, I wanna grant, wanna permit, here's my initial paperwork, we took some of that money and applied it to our expert to go out there and say, here's what we recommend. You should cut that one, cut this one, cut that one as part of the permit process, they're gonna do that anyway, and make the recommendations for, you know, whatever treatment needed to be made. And say, look, here's what we think you ought to do to this parcel, and then walk away from it. You want any more grant money? You gotta follow the rules or guidelines or the recommendations.
Of our staff member.
That, that's kinda a way to mitigate it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if it's a good idea, but I think, I think Bobby's kinda right, it's kinda convoluted in that regard. My, my question to you is gonna be like, how do we determine like, what the qualifications are for what percentage of the grant money? Um, you know, I mean, if I've got five hundred feet of diamond lake brood frontage versus no diamond lake frontage, is that a difference, or how do we, how do we determine what the, what that bucket of money is? And we'll tell you, there's gonna be very few projects that are not gonna be thousands of dollars. This is like pure labor, you know that, right?
Yeah, I know that. I know that.
It's pure labor, a little bit of brushing of the chemical after you chuck the buckthorn out.
Well, that's why I think a lot of people won't do it, and I'm just, if we can incentivize them by, hey, you know, we'll chip in some of the money if you at, at least show an interest in doing this, maybe it, it inspires them to do it. And right now, we're not inspiring anybody to do it.
Well, yeah, I agree, I don't think this is all good, delaney, I'll, I'll, I'll completely agree, it's all great. I think, what, what's, where's the stick, right? I mean, four years from now, five years from now, maybe there ought to be something in the books now. It's a thing, five years from now, buckthorn's no longer allowed.
Right.
You know? And I will come cut it for you and send you nice bills, you know, that kinda thing, eh? I mean, you give people a way to kinda look into it, put a carrot or a stick at the end of it, 'cause you need a stick, you can't, all carrots in this case. There should be some resource, you know, or, or something. I mean, I've, I've had fifteen tree guys out, and everyone's gonna tell you a different story, and they have, I mean, a couple match a lot, don't, you know? As to how to treat it, but I, I did hear, you know, the brushing of the stump and all that from somebody more reliable. Anyway, Bobby's right, though, it's kinda awkward. You know, if we took some of that money and applied it to the tree that's qualified as part of the permit process anyway, 'cause you have to give your permit anyway.
Yeah, I think we're hoping to use our conservancy group, who, we have a lot of really talented people on there to come out and help, um, be in part, like, help advise and monitor about them.
Okay.
I, I like Chris's idea of, of, of a, a staff person. It gives a little more structure than a committee person.
Well, I mean, if they walked out with a business card and said, I'm representing Long Grove, and if you wanna get a permit, you're coming through me.
I think that's powerful, you know?
Because we will need a permit for that, right, I think?
Yeah, that buckthorn.
Absolutely for buckthorn.
Yeah, you can take it out.
Aunt Tenucci?
Aunt Christmas, she's not here.
So...
Guess what?
That's part of it, it'll be the best.
So, do I have, um, so, enough support, take your suggestions and work on this a little?
Yes.
Absolutely, you need, you need to do something, 'cause it's out of control, this village is overgrown.
There, there are parts of the stuff when you can go down the street and feel like that.
Yes, exactly right, I know, I hear it.
Not a good feeling, but it is private.
It is private.
You know, there are a lot of people in this world who don't even see that stuff.
Yeah.
It's just not in their awareness, so...
Are we gonna end there, end of report? Okay, I'm gonna keep this moving, um, trustee Karowski, do you have anything for us?
Waco's moving to its first in-person meeting coming up, I don't know what the agenda is. Some more to follow on that. And our other baseball team in the...
Fly on my camera.
They did not succeed in winning the tournament, they do not represent the country. But they made a big game, so...
Did I get it?
Wow.
Sorry, everyone.
End of report.
Thank you. That was not aimed at the audience online, so, there was a fly, it was on my camera.
What does Waco do with the glass that they get that still has labels on it, or glue from the labels?
Just glue it.
For recycling.
Cheeky, I'm sorry.
I know, you would try it, period.
You jumped, I'm sorry.
I hear it costs more to recycle it than to dispose it.
See the fly, is the fly on the floor? Is the fly on the floor?
Get it right on.
Get on that right away.
I'm right on that.
He's writing notes as we see, thank you.
All right. Anything else, Chris?
No. Contamination, understood.
Trustee Tenucci.
Nothing.
You sure? Okay, all right, got it. Um, all right, so, the next item on the agenda is the village manager's report.
Uh, the only thing I would share with board is if you had, uh, the audit is still underway, it's starting to wind down.
I didn't do it, yeah.
Um, if you have your documents about the, uh, knowledge of fraud, that, uh...
I didn't either.
You should've did it from a weird position, you probably missed it, 'cause I had that.
Is this an email or a US?
Yeah, it was an email, yeah.
An email from the auditor.
We got it la-, at the last board meeting, the same day or the day before last.
I will, uh, I, I will, I will resend it to everybody, and if you didn't, if you already had it, just disregard it.
I sent my name today.
But I'm glad there's a couple sections where you actually have to like write in your own town.
Yeah.
And I was struggling with wording for that, so, I, I don't know if it makes sense to, you know, maybe, kinda give some suggestions on what's a little word should look like, you know?
Be careful there.
I'm struggling with like, what would be a good word to...
Audit is independent, so, yeah, the village can't really instruct you on how to answer.
That's it.
All right, um, anything else?
So, you're gonna resend it?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, I, I can...
I'll send it to everybody, yeah.
Uh, so, we, we do have, um, on the agenda, potential for executive session. Do we wanna go in for executive session to talk about acquisition of property?
Yeah.
Yes?
Something to talk about, sure.
Okay, so then, we're gonna need a motion to, uh, uh, go into executive session to talk specifically about the acquisition and disposition of property. So, it was moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Karowski.
Hi.
Trustee Michelle.
Hi.
Trustee Tenucci.
Hi.
Okay, motion carried, um, we're now going to go to executive session in a minute. Thank you for being here.
I just had to shut off the video and that one.
Yeah.
Good number.
Three, one, two. Sure, I've got it. Five, one, I, I just, I just... One, four, three, two, one, ten, ten.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, uh, yes. Hand me my email, I'm gonna go to my email.
Yes, okay.
And I'll find it.
Take a bunch of people who do different things, and they need to switch positions.
Right, right.
I was more involved.
But I just want...
They should, they should be included.
Absolutely.
And even I'm thinking, like, the downtown, you know, we, we look for kids volunteers, which one?
Kids, um, my kids have done it, they're growing up, and I, I, and I... Yeah, and I don't think anybody's taking advantage of it. Yeah, yeah, no, everybody's got their, their name and number.
Hold on a second.
Who's at Alfred?
Well, even like the, uh, I think it's kind of a cute thing.
Betsy.
Right now, the...
At Alfred Gates or Gates Alfred?
Gates Alfred.
I was right.
I need it for roll call.
It's, it's fun, otherwise, the spouse would know better and not join.
You know why?
Exactly.
So, yeah, and, and we, we look for kids volunteers.
Yeah, why isn't that working, hold on a second.
And maybe we, you know, true.
I, I wonder, I gave them a, 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 that would work with them.
And, and, but I'm not going to do it for, I guess, me, when it's...
It's in celebration of the fifth cycle of the twelve-year zodiac calendar that I went through.
Fifth cycle, twelve years?
Um, I don't know if you really need to worry about that camera, Greg, so, um, we just need a motion adjourned. Oh, you did, so, moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Michelle, roll call, please.
Trustee, hi. Trustee Michelle?
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor?
What's the motion?
Hi.
The adjourn.
Hi.
Trustee Tenucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried, meeting adjourned, good night, everyone.
John Boyer, night Elizabeth.
Put your hat on.